Sorry. Oh, was it?[15.32][15.32](laughing) Yeah, and he's next, I think. Sorry about that. I started to walk out the door and well, I said, "Well, you don't have to be there at 6:00." I said, "No, I'm supposed to be there at 6:00, not 6:00." I will call a meeting to order. Call roll, please.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Gillen?
Here.
Harrod?
Here.
Finley? Rutherford?
Here.
Shaw? Here. Salter?
Here.
We have a forum.
That town with me and then the Lord's Prayer. Our fathers are in heaven. I believe thy name. Thy name is great. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Ever so stand thy right where ever. The devil shall perish us with his grasp. As we can. And he is not in temptation. The world is a kingdom. Thy is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Please stand for the flag slate position. Flag. A flag slate is considered by United States of America and as a republic for which it stands one nation, hundred dollar, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all. But they have a forum and we'll start with the consent agenda.
Vice Mayor, I'd like to pull one C for discussion. One C, one.
One C. All right. And what else? Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. We'll have a motion to approve the other remaining items on the consent agenda.
So move.
Second. Have a motion by Shaw, second by Rutherford. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Five years. Not more than five years. No objections or just a five other spring, I guess. Five years.
Six.
Six. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm one short today. Too short. Okay.
Vice Mayor, one C, one in review of the contract with Stewart and Clover. I had had a very brief discussion with both our city attorney and the city manager in regard to the fourth paragraph down, second sentence. You shall at all times have the right to terminate our legal services in the event we violate this engagement. It gives the city no opportunity to either extend it or consider other options at the so my suggestion is that we put in a 30-day notice to the attorney, giving them notice should the city decide that they would like to pursue options. And the city attorney is open to that. I would ask for language from the city attorney.
Okay. And just to make sure I understand correctly, there would be a 30-day notice to Stewart and Clover if you were to reopen it for bid in the future or something like that?
Correct.
Okay. There's no issue with that type of language. I don't have it with me right now. We'll be okay at the next meeting, won't we, Justin?
Yeah, we can just.
I can prepare that.
But take a motion and a second. To do that, doesn't it?
It would take a motion.
Yeah, motion and a second and a vote.
So move.
Does this need to be deferred?
Well, what she wants to do is to give them 30-day notice that we're gonna re-bid on the legal services.
Should the city decide to. You're going to have some new city commissioners and they may want to pursue a longer-term contract. They may decide to look at doing a direct hire of an attorney, but it gives the city opportunity to pursue other options. At this point in time, the language within this agreement does not give the city any opportunity other than if they violate the agreement.
And that's, just to be clear, that's within the term of the agreement, which is a one-year term.
Correct.
We have had it in the contract that we could notify them or give notice, 30 or 60-day notice if we wanted to terminate. And I'd rather see that language added back into the contract than they'll start advertising for, because it'll be September, August, when the new commissioners take over, when it'll be just in August.
First meeting in September, sir.
Yeah, the first meeting in September.
I think I understand, and the city attorney understands, the clarity you all are seeking in the contract, so we have another meeting before the end of the fiscal year and so we can certainly work through these changes and prepare a new proposal or amended proposal before you on your June 18 meeting. So there is no objection to me, for me, if you would like to defer action.
So my suggested language is that we defer this until such time as the city attorney can craft language to place within this letter of agreement.
So that's a motion.
That's a motion.
Second. Any other discussion? All right, call the question.
Can I clarify the motion, please?
Defer it for 30 days to?
To June 18.
I have defer until such time the city attorney can craft language.
Right, okay.
To the June 18 meeting.
That is correct.
Defer until the June 18 meeting for the city attorney.
Correct.
Excuse me, to craft language.
Yes.
And who made the second?
I'm sorry.
Who made the second?
Uh, Deb. Ms. Shaw. Any other discussion? Call the question. Six ages. Next item, I approve renewal of the following community service contract. Review committed contract for fiscal 2018-19. Visit Shawnee Inc. and senior citizens of Shawnee.
Mr. Vice Mayor, that was included in the consent agenda, so we're actually.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yeah. Citizen participation. Anybody would like to talk to the commission? I ask if anybody would like to speak to the commission. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kate Joyce, the executive director slash cruise director of the Shawnee Senior Center. And I want to thank you for again renewing our contract with the city of Shawnee to provide services for the seniors. I also want to invite you to a dance. So I'm going to go ahead and take this chance to do the shameless plug. Thank you. So again, thank you for supporting us. This is one of the events that we do to help raise some of our own money. I would look forward to having all of y'all there. You've been before, so you could come again. And you only have to be 50 to come, but this event is open to the public. So please come and join us.
Anyone else who'd like to address the commission? Okay. Saying no one else, I declare a public hearing on the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget. The item is now open if there's anyone that'd like to speak to this issue. Please come forward. Write a report.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we're a little bit of a unique situation. We actually, the publication notice for the public hearing had the previous city commission start time on it at 6:30 PM. So we would ask that you recess the public hearing at this point and let us get through some other business and then reopen it at 6:30 or thereafter.
Call, I say consider resolution, go to item four. Consider resolution declaring city of Shawnee fire department property surplus and authorization of donation of said property. Okay, then, please.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Just respectfully ask this evening if to consider placing the piece of our apparatus as surplus. It's a 1997 Pierce pumper that we've used for 21 years now. We held on to it after Station 2 has been closed for a while, just in case we needed a back, as a backup, backup to our backup, if that makes sense. But it's, we're ready to go ahead and let go of it now. We've actually got guys going up to Pierce Manufacturing in Wisconsin tomorrow morning to do the final inspection on the new engine that's coming in. So we're ready to go ahead and request that this be declared surplus. Our plan is to offer it to county fire departments, Pawlawatomi County Fire Departments first. And if nobody is interested, then look outside the county and our surrounding area. If we don't find anybody, I think we will, we've already had some interest in it, if we don't find somebody, then we'll place it on publicsurplus.com to put it on there, if that, with your permission.
Do I have any questions as a chief?
Thank you.
Any discussion or anything? Okay, we need to, motion to.
I make a motion.
Donate or sell of the property?
I make a motion. Second. Oh, sorry. That's what I don't know.
I asked for a motion, then I asked for a second. He made the motion, Mr. Shaw. Okay, we need a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Gillen, second. Okay, second.
Thank you, Vice Commissioner, Vice Mayor, excuse me. A resolution to declare certain city of Shawnee fire department property surplus and no longer needed for certain purposes, describing said item and authorizing the donation or sale of said item.
Okay, let's go for it. Six ages, no opposition. A resolution to declare certain city of Shawnee fire department property surplus and no longer needed for the city's purposes, describing said items as authorizing the donation of or sale of such items. Is that the one we just got through with?
Yes, sir.
And that's the one you read. Okay, new business.
Sir, we have no new business this evening.
Administrative reports.
You have two this evening. Chief Tisher will start us out.
Good evening again, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. I just wanted to share some really positive, good news with you, that we got a donation to our department of $10,000 from a private citizen that is very close to our department and very acutely aware of the need for cancer prevention in the fire service. This donation is, what it's gonna do is gonna buy us a turnout gear extractor to go at Station 2 when it's reopened on Bryant Street. That's a need that we have. We designed the building for that. The extractor is a kind of a specialized washing machine that's designed to wash our turnout gear, the guy, the coat and pants that the guys wear inside structured fires. It's designed specifically to wash that gear without damaging it. And we, it's something we've really pushed lately, we really, in the last few years, we've really tried to increase the cleanliness of that gear. That's some of the biggest exposure that the guys, firefighters have to some of the carcinogens, is when it gets trapped on their gear and then they continue to breathe it day in, day out. So we really push for them to wash their gear. And this will give us a extractor, we have one at Station 3, this will give us at Station 2 as well. So extremely excited about that, extremely grateful to this person for donating this money, just wanted to let you know, know about it and what it was for. It's basically, it's like a commercial washing machine, is what it is.
Do you do more than one?
Yes, yeah, you can do several sets in there. I want to say we can do three full sets of turnout gear in there. We separate them. The turnout gear have an inner liner, a thermal barrier, and an outer shell, so we separate those out. And I think we can, so there's basically four pieces to every garment, every suit. And so I think, I believe we can wash three sets in there at one time.
I think I was gonna vote for it till you said it was a washing machine, but a turnout gear extractor, man.[899.12][899.12](laughing)
That's a cool term. It does a, does a great job of getting all that carcinogen and all that stuff out of there and getting it really clean. Really, really grateful for this donation. Thank you.
Do I have any questions for the chief?
You said they're going to differ, back on the other subject, but they're going up to look at the engine and the ladder, both?
Not the ladder. The ladder's not quite, just not quite ready yet. Their manufacturing, the ladder manufacturing part of their facility was backlog, so that's, the ladder's not quite ready yet, so they're gonna have to make a second trip up in the next few weeks to look at it, unfortunately.
But they're still 30 days, 60 days?
Yeah, they're, it's not far behind. It's just a few weeks behind. We don't have a date from them yet, but we should be just a few weeks behind on the ladder, three, four weeks, something like that. Okay.
Thank you.
Community Director, Development Director, Justin DeBruin, comprehensive plan update.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Excuse me. Yes, I wanted to give a quick update on the comprehensive plan update, that this commission on February 20 approved the contract with RDG Planning Design for services related to, again, the comprehensive plan update. So, so far really, after February 20, in late March, over March 26 and 27, we had RDG in for the first time and was able to accomplish a few things, including kickoff meeting with city officials, tour of Shawnee, and our first steering committee meeting, which is really the group that guides this process along for the full 12 to 13 months. In between, really then and now, April and May, most of the work going on has been really the collection and analysis of city data, so plans, surveys, and studies associated with the city, given to, given to RDG for really the first component of the comprehensive plan update, which will be the Shawnee Today, which is an exploration of where we're at today before we kind of move forward. Aside from that was the development of a project website, which is up and running at this point, that's ShawneePlan.com. And the creation of several online surveys, really meant for different groups. One, again, that is ready right now, is for citizens at large to go to the website to look at, to look at and find that survey. It's five to eight minutes long, it's quite, quite short. And others are also being developed for not only the commission, but also the advisory committee as well. So aside from, from those points there, we've been highly focused on this next visit, which will be over June 12 and 13, which will be quite heavy on the agenda side, so I'd like to give you a few times and dates to look forward to. So the bulk of work happening on June 12 and 13 will be stakeholder group interviews. What staff has done really over the last, last month, month and a half, has been sending out invites to a variety of individuals from different sectors in Shawnee, so give or take government, education, nonprofit, and for-profit, in an attempt to have small group interviews, eight to 10 people, over about seven different sessions, to have discussions, answer questions, and really just give feedback as far as the city at this early stage. The two larger events to happen on those two dates, so on June 12, at, which is a Tuesday, at 5:00 PM, will be the public kickoff event, which will be hosted at First Christian Church on Broadway. And I have attached a flyer to the next page on the administrative report here. And again, the hope is to have as many citizens as possible come out, learn a little bit more about the comprehensive planning process, ask questions, and really garner some feedback from them via some small activities that we plan to host. So with that flyer, we are passing that out. Please spread the word as much as you can about that, so we can get the most input as we can. And the next event would be the next day, so Wednesday, June 13, will be the second advisory committee meeting, which the commission, again, about a month ago, gave final approval for the formation of that particular group, and we've had great success having, again, a variety of individuals accept positions on that particular committee. So this will be the first one with the whole group together, working on guiding, guiding this process. So once we get through June, really the hope in July is to have that Shawnee Today report to, again, present towards, present to the commission, and be the first step as we look, look towards creating this, this plan. So that's all I had. If you have any questions for me, I'd love to answer those for you.
So you were able to get a full and complete steering committee, Justin? I know there was a few issues in trying to fill it at some point.
Yes, yes, actually we did. Everybody's been very gracious in accepting their role on the commission.
Excellent, thank you.
You know, we need to have a concert in conjunction with something like this, so we can get some folks out there.
Yeah, there you go.
Quite honestly, it's kind of discouraging sometimes to see how few people, well, it's a complicated thing, situation, and they feel inadequate, yet their ideas still would be important. May have simple ideas that could be, turn out to be important ideas.
No, no, and that's exactly right. It's, really those two opportunities are meant to give people two different avenues to kind of give feedback, so a survey that they can privately, of course, answer, answer those questions, give the feedback, or really, we focus on this particular event to make sure we break it into smaller groups and really have as much feedback as we can. Really trying to advertise this particular event. We find public engagement to be really the cornerstone of making this plan as good as it can be. So hopefully with multiple approaches through the next few months, we'll get, get some great feedback.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you. City Mayor, if you'd like to make some announcement about the fire station's open house.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Harry. I mentioned it at the last meeting, and I think it's important to mention it again, but this week we are hosting three open house opportunities, and that information is on our, on our website and on our social media page, and we've got flyers too, if anybody would like to take some with you this evening. But it starts off Wednesday at fire station number three on MacArthur, and then Thursday and Friday, we have opportunities here at City Hall to tour the police department headquarters in the basement and Station 1. And so we want, really want, and we have both afternoon, kind of lunch break timeframes, and then an early evening timeframe as well for individuals that may work outside the area and be commuting back to Shawnee from, from another locale. And so there's a lot of opportunities for the public to tour these important facilities, learn about our challenges and our needs, and how proposition number four would impact those facilities in terms of improvements. Happy to answer any questions on that as well.
They, that's one thing that I've been asked about, if they're gonna go over what the needs are for each one of the stations and for the police department, so that's why I wanted to mention that again.
Thank you.
What are the times?
You know, there's several different times. What I will do is.
Staggered? I've seen it, I just didn't know.
I will email everybody this evening with that.
Wednesday at Station 3 will be 11:00 to 1:00, and then 4:00 to 6:00, and then Thursday, Station 1 and the police department from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And then Friday will be 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, central station and the police department, and we'll have 10:00 to 1:00 on Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That.
Yes, sir. We're on number seven now.
The Commissioners' comments. Who wants to be first, Mr. Ben? Have any comments?
I think I've just said what I was gonna say.[1449.82][1449.82](laughing)
Mr. Shaw?
I would like to say, Chief Tisher, that I'm probably one of the rare city commissioners that both try to make a motion and second it all at one time.
No, I've done that.[1465.12][1465.12](laughing)
You're doing good work, and thank you for that. And I'm so excited about that fire station nearing its completion date over on Bryant Street. I'm also happy to see that all the work that's being done on the VITIS Foundation over on Independence. I think they're getting close to, to really having a nice building there. And I certainly appreciate our seniors and all that our senior center does for us, and thank you for this nice, bright little flyer that you gave to us, that's really helpful. And one last thing, I would like to apologize to the city commission, 'cause last time that you met, I, I didn't even give Justin notice that I wasn't gonna be here. My husband surprised me, and we went on an out-of-nation anniversary trip, so when we got there, we had passport problems, and I, it just went out of my head entirely about the city, so I apologize.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes. Just would like to encourage everyone to come to the open houses, the times that Commissioner Salter announced, and hopefully we can get a lot of people out there to see what the, what is there now, what the needs are now, and hopefully some more understanding on what, what they need with proposition number four.
I think it's real important, again, I'll mention, it's gonna come up again and again, I guess, but we have a sales tax issue coming up on this, and this might be one of the most important, I guess, that we've had to face. Having a police department sort of like the Phantom of the Opera, you know, one of those canons underneath the opera house and everything like that. We've been talking about this since 1992, trying to figure some way to get the PD up above level and on ground level, at least. And this will be one of those big opportunities. This is gonna be one of the major things that's just gonna allow this to happen properly. Otherwise, anybody that has questions that might be listening in, I'm sure any of the Commissioners would be happy to discuss, the park issues and various other things, and what we anticipate having correlating down with downtown and tying in with the Santa Feis station, a lot of great things that can happen, and it's just not gonna happen unless we get this passed. So even though I hate to see the sales tax go up, I think there's really good reason to see that added, the momentum that we have as a city will definitely be pushed ahead and continue the way we've been going in a grand way, if we can get this done. We'll have a wonderful city. And by the way, it's not too bad for getting jobs here, as far as, let's say, economic development is either, because your plans and what you see coming is important, as well as what you already have. Thank you.
Mr. Shaw?
I'd like to thank Mr. Erickson and Ms. Wilson for dealing with my, putting up with my questions at the 11th hour, kind of thing, trying to get those things taken care of and addressed. Also want to reiterate, Commissioner Shaw and Commissioner Rutherford have talked about in regard to fire station and its progress, and the visits to the fire stations and the police headquarters. Those are gonna be really important. And I do still want you to go ahead and email me when it's time to. He rattled that off the fast.[1684.32][1684.32](laughing)
They've got brochure on the, on the desk now at the city manager's office. I was by there this morning. See, I would like to apologize for being late. For some reason, I had the time still at 6:30 instead of 6:00, so my wife said, "Well, you've got time to eat, it starts at 6:30." I said, "My gosh, it starts at 6 o'clock, I gotta run." I didn't break any speed and laws or anything else, but I was late, so I apologize for that. And it just, my oversight, thinking it was still at 6:30 and not adjusting to the time change.
Well, glad to have you, anyway.
Yeah, well, I text the city manager and told him I'd see him at 6:00, and he never said a word, so he assumed, he assumed that I knew it. Okay, let's go back to our public hearing on our budget. What item is that?
Number 37.
Public hearing off of the fiscal year budget 2018-2019. I declare the public hearing now open. Is there any, do you have a report, city manager?
Just a very brief report. This is, of course, something that's familiar to all of you, and been through this, some of you many times, a few of you a little less so, but this, of course, is our annual budget process. We spoke in greater detail on May 7 and May 21, and give you an overview of the various budgets and the preliminary work that had been done. Tonight is the required public hearing, where you can take additional testimony from the public. We are required to do one by state law as well. And then the budget itself, all three budgets will be before you at the next meeting, June 18, for. eighteenth, for, uh, formal adoption. So, there's really nothing, uh, new here, any surprises. In your packet is, uh, is actually just the publication that's required, uh, that shows a balanced budget, uh, seventy, kind of total budget of seventy million, five hundred thirty-six, four hundred forty-four dollars for fiscal year twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. And with that, I would, uh, request that you, uh, take in the additional public testimony.
Okay. Are there any additional comments for, uh, for, uh, the budget, or anyone would like to speak for the budget, other than what the city manager's told us? I vote against the budget. Any, have anybody have any questions about the budget period? Okay, I declare the public, uh, hearing now closed. Is there any other discussion or anything? I declare the, uh, submission meeting now adjourned, and we'll go to the airport authority. I would make one comment on the airport authority. I'm sorry, I failed to notify you that in the contract with the, uh, with the leasee, the date of twenty, it says two thou, two hundred and one instead of twenty eighteen. I don't know whether you caught that or not, but, okay. All right, I require a quorum, and consider the approval of the consent agenda for the airport authority.
So moved.
Have a-
Second.
Commissioner Gillum moves, and Commissioner Shaw, seconds. Any discussion? Call for the question. We have five yes and one abstention. Motion carries. Item number two, consider be a construction of T-hanger, tax away, AIP project number three dash forty dash zero zero eight eight dash oh eighteen dash twenty eighteen award. Monty, you have a, well, Wilson, do you have a report on this?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Erickson. Evening, commissioners. The, uh, staff received three bids for this project, which we opened at the prior meeting and sent to our partners, uh, Locker Engineering. I would like to take a moment just to mention that Mr. Patrick Barnes, my colleague from Locker Engineering, is here to answer any questions that are involved math, engineering, design, uh, which is, which he, which he backs me up for. Uh, I wrote, I write things, he, you know, and the math errors are all mine, so, and thank you for catching that. Uh, we thought it was a fairly successful, competitive bid, because we did receive, uh, some fairly tight numbers, um, against each other. Uh, Locker Engineering recommends that the, the folks that came in as the apparent low bidders are, in fact, a good company to work with. They've had direct experience with them, recommend them not only as, uh, sufficient and accurate bids in middle, but also from the reputation in the industry for having performed work of similar nature. We will have a DVE participation from an Oklahoma company, which is Peyton Enterprises LLC, Peyton Enterprises of Oklahoma LLC, uh, to assist with some of the hauling of materials to and from the worksite. And it is exceeding our expectation. We had published a goal of eight percent participation, and they have come in with an eight point eight, which is, well, it may, it's not a small project. To my personal wallet, it's, it's a fairly small project, so that kind of participation is pretty strong and, and, and much welcome. So, uh, we have preparation for, uh, execution of contract only after having received the funds from the AIP grant program this year, which I could give you a date if I could read Congress's mind. Uh, but as soon as they do that, then, uh, we'll, um-
Change it.
We'll go ahead and, and move forward with, uh, the award to contractor with the permission of this body.
Actually, you won't, if, uh, uh, we got to proceed until we have to receive the funds from FIA, FIA, or FFI.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
The notice to proceed would be held until, I, I'm pretty sure that as, as good a contractor as they are, and as much as they'd like to work for the city of Shawnee and the Shawnee Mutual Airport, they're probably not willing to do it for free.
Probably not. Probably not. Any questions, anyone have of, uh, airport managers? No question?
The recommendation, sir, would be, uh, award the project to the apparent low bidder, GCC, for construction phase, including alternate one, uh, ninety calendar days for the commencement date to the specified notice to proceed, and setting liquidated damages at one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars per calendar day contingent on receiving the funds.
Okay, consider motion.
So moved.
Commissioner Shaw makes a motion. Page eight and down.
Second.
Commissioner Rutherford, second. Any other discussion? And call a question. Thank you. Motion carried, six yeas. New business?
There is no new business, sir.
I mainly adjourn the airport authority and go to the municipal authority. And, uh, again, we still have a quorum. Consider approval of consent agenda.
Still moved?
I'll second that.
Mr. Shaw, Matt moved, and Gillum, second. Any discussion? Okay, call a question. I have, uh, five nays, yays, and one abstention. Motion carries. New business?
There is no new business on this agenda either, sir.
No, being no, uh, no new business, we adjourn. Thank you. Again, I apologize for being late and missing everything up.